Okay, thank you very much, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please, and start off by inviting any community comments. They're being so nice. I would personally just like to say a few words. This is the first school committee meeting of this fall semester and of the academic year. I'd like to go on record echoing the written comments of the superintendent of thanking everyone involved in the school for the hard work that they've put together since the closure of the spring term. And really knowing how much work has gone on, both by the facilities and custodial staff in making the grounds and the buildings look so wonderful. And also the administration for hard work with a dynamic shifting game of chess with pieces on a board that how many pieces needed to be there? Acquiring pieces, putting pieces on, and motivating and inspiring those pieces. So I just wanted to say thank you so much and to the faculty for being so wonderfully patient with a shifting plates of numbers. And I'm sure that that cannot have been restful as a school committee. And I'd like to just express my thanks for all of the patience, the hard work, and the diligence that went on. And I'm reminded when I read the excellent communication about the new additions to the team, I was reminded of the comments we've had several times the last few years about valuing flexibility. And whether that's flexibility of physical space we need or flexibility of numbers or financial flexibility. It's been great to have welcomed so many good new members to the team. So thank you for everyone who was involved in that. With that, I'd like to hand over to Mrs. Dial. It's not a phone, it's all a phone.
Thank you very much. Building on that, thank you so much, Adrian. We had a very nice, smooth start to the school year. People worked very hard over the summer and getting things ready the first couple of weeks. And we have incredible new teams in place just about everywhere throughout the school. It feels very positive and energized, lovely. We have a lot going on for professional development this year, which is very exciting around science and engineering, as well as some other goals that people are developing, really customizing it to the grade level or the unit or the department that they're working in. And that's really big on the horizon for us. Today, we actually had a staff meeting and teams started developing their goals for the year. Talked about the changes in personnel. Our preschool playground is now fully completed. Thank you so much for your support for that. It's greatly appreciated. And we are off and running. So do you have any questions for us around the start of the school year?
I had a question on the report just around the Maker Space.
Yes.
It was very interesting to read that. I think that's fantastic. And I was just wondering, when will that be used and accessible to the students? Is there formal time or inter- recess time or not?
Any personal question? I think, I'll turn it over to Cheryl in a second, but I think it would be used in many different times. During formal library classes. Okay. And there are also many times when the students just come in through this space to use it. Also Chicaring reporters. And over time, I would love to explore how we use this space. There are so many ways we can use this differently than we're using it now. It would really help the kids out. Cheryl, would you like to add something?
I'm thinking that we can be really creative with time during the school day. Can be lunch recess, I know. Possibly IV blocks, depending on what the goal is for the space. So I think it'll be well-used.
Yes.
Can I ask just two questions? What is about the Spanish curriculum? The addition of the Spanish teacher shared with Pine Hill? How does that work in her day? I know she teaches all the kindergarten and several of the first grade classes. Does she split the time by a full day in each classroom? Or is it half a day or whatever? In each school, sorry. Or is she half mornings at Chicaring, half mornings at Pine Hill?
So she's .5 here and she's .2 there. So she starts her day over there and comes over here. There's a lot of collaboration this year between Laura and Tanya Bridge at Pine Hill, which was difficult to create in the past. And then because the bulk of Stephanie Salado's time is here, she's collaborating a lot with Laura and Laura. She's working four days a week.
Okay, thank you.
You recall they're writing the curriculum as they anticipate it. That's underway.
And reading that only in a very short time we're going to have K through 5 here. That was really stopped me in my tracks, stuff.
It's gone by quickly.
And then the last question was just on the education evaluator system. There was a mention change of platform?
Yes.
Is that? I just would, there was a lovely phrase afterwards that said, "It will better help us meet our needs." But I just, for a couple of snippets of how exactly the change is going to make things easier.
Yes. The interface itself was a little bit clunky on Baseline Edge. It's much more what we'd all expect when we visit any website or have any kind of online interaction. It's a system that I used in my last district. Of course, the last, you know, three years, I'm sure it has changed substantially. But my experience, having worked in it in the past, was that the teach point team was very accessible, very responsive to our needs, really customized the site to be what we wanted. And that was not always our experience with Baseline Edge, although Dr. Leduke did most of the communications on Baseline.
There's more centralized controls. Mrs. Dial is able to make changes to user names and things like that. So it's not as though we need to go through my office to be able to get something done. In order to create an observation form, you just click on it. You had to assign those observation forms in Baseline Edge. So that's where the clunkiness came in. So it's a better software tool for us.
Any further questions? Thank you very much. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Dink.
Thank you very much. Our work did not stop over the summer. In addition to getting the buildings ready, professional development was still a higher priority. There was a lot of great summer workshop days. One of, a couple of those summer workshop days focused on the science, technology, engineering, and computer science review. So we got a lot of the planning underway in order to be able to launch that. But I give credit to our educators as they continue to enroll in those graduate level courses to better themselves, but also to improve the learning for our students. I want to give a shout out to Callie Egan for mentoring and induction. I heard about the Dover demon, just to share with you ahead of time. That's part of the trivia that Callie uses with our new educators. And Emily the Cow, if anybody knows what Emily the Cow is, for sure. Burden of the Dover demon for Dover. But Callie did a great job in leading our new educators and their mentors talking about the growth mindset. And that mindset is focused on the positive, much like the Positive Behavioral Intervention System, PBIS, that's in place at Chicaring. It's the lens with which we look at situations. So what we can do, not focused on what we can't. And that conversation began, she has another meeting tomorrow with our educators to just bring them all back together. And we're hosting it at Chicaring because we had a banner year in hiring new staff. So we'll come to where the largest population is.
How did the rest of the district fare in terms of new hires? I know we had significant addition and turnover or change. What about the rest of the school systems?
It was what we would expect, two to three at each of those venues. Pine Hill more because they had added two classrooms to it. The attrition, people moving on. It's a, it's a good change.
Good rookie class.
I was very impressed with them. You could see by their credentials. The Science, Technology, Engineering, and Computer Science Review is underway. New to the public schools of Dover and Sherburne, but certainly well underway. Parents will receive a survey just about their perceptions of the Science, Technology, Engineering program. It's simple, it'll go out through the eBlast in early October. The Chicaring news, excuse me, which is what Mrs. Dial uses. And students in grades five, seven, and 10. Just a short 10-question survey that will be administered in their classrooms. So the administrators and the educators will receive a very comprehensive survey on the curriculum instruction, assessment, leadership, and professional development. And those are the areas that the curriculum review will look at. So we'll be presenting that sometime this fall. Mr. McCullough and I are looking at agendas and when we can do that. But the review will be complete by October 24th. A comprehensive report will be written at a high level, K to 12, presented to the school committees with a detailed action plan for next steps at each of the areas. I have to give kudos to both Pine Hill and Chicaring. We're going to launch on next Wednesday, September 28th, with the entire K-5 staff looking at one life science unit per grade level across both schools. And that's a tribute to those who took those curriculum workshop days. And Sats McHenry was also part of that. So I thank you for your help, as well as Mrs. Chase. Ms. Sherry, did I say her name correctly?
Yeah, Caverry.
Caverry, excuse me. And led by Dr. Ryanman too, and Mrs. Dial, so I think that's pretty respectable. And you can see the areas that we're looking at. It isn't a huge shift, but it's something that gave us the focus on those practice standards, modeling, using data, communicating information, all of those things. Planning, carrying out investigations. And I have to say, I've been in a lot of districts and our science curriculum is very strong already. So I just see us collaborating to assure consistency across both elementary schools and then how do we, what's the feeder to for fifth to sixth grade? And we've already spoken about teach points. So any questions I could answer?
The surveys that you mentioned at those grades, so the student component, faculty and administration component, is there a family one as well?
Yes, yes. And that will go all through the Chicaring news at the beginning of October.
Thank you.
Right, I'm correct to understand that the family one goes to K through 5 and then just fifth, only the students only will be?
Oh, that's correct.
That's correct.
It's, the family is K-12, but for Chicaring it's K-12.
Do you have a question? Thank you very much. I'll move it over to the superintendent, please.
Thank you, Adrian, and good evening all. Welcome back to a new school year. I want to echo just a couple of thoughts that appear in Laura's report. Thank you, Laura, and Adrian, your comments at the beginning. Thank you for those. By all accounts, certainly we had a tremendously smooth opening here at Chicaring, but throughout the district as well. And as you can imagine, successful starts to the school year do not just happen magically. It takes a lot of hard work and planning, that much of which happens over the summer, but really starts well before the end of the previous school year. And as a result of that, I do want to recognize some specific individuals. Here at Chicaring, I want to thank both Laura and Deb for all their hard work and their leadership at this school. Really sets the tone for what happens over the summer and what gets done in terms of all the preparation. So thank you for all your hard work. I also want to thank the teachers and the professional staff. I think that those who don't work in schools, who might from time to time think about while they're toiling away over the summer, you know, gee, those teachers, you know, they have the summers off. And in fact, the reality is that is there some time to refresh and re-energize? There certainly is. But most of our staff are working through the summer. They're planning, they're in and out of our schools, getting ready for the new school year. And they do this so that when the students arrive the first day, they're ready to go. So kudos to our staff, certainly here at Chicaring and throughout the district, for their dedication in ensuring that the school year starts off on a good note. And then I would be remiss if I didn't speak personally about our custodial team. You know, Tom Kanana, John Maluski, Juvia Orado, under the very capable supervision of Steve Orado, and certainly with a lot of assistance from Ralph Kelly, our facilities director. They just do an extraordinary job over the course of the summer. They know exactly what they need to do. And, you know, this building just looked tremendous. Don and I had an opportunity to go through the building right at the beginning of school with Laura and Deb and Steve and Ralph. And, you know, it was great because Steve had an opportunity to just take us through the building and point out all the work that had been done. And just hearing him talk with a sense of pride, really, on what happens here was gratifying. So I really want to thank those people for all of their hard work and any effort in opening the school year. I also want to thank the central office staff, Dr. Leduke, Ms. Fattori, and all of the administrative assistants at the central office. You know, their focus is really, what do we have to do to ensure that all of our schools open and open successfully? So really a fine job from them as well. In terms of personnel, Laura gave you a nice thumbnail sketch of what was happening at Chicaring. And closing your packet is a spreadsheet that identifies all of our new to Chicaring staff for this year. For the professional staff, there was some additional information regarding their background. And what's interesting to note around the professional staff, nine new professional staff, but of those nine, just two were resignations. So nine in a district this size is a considerable number of professional staff to turn over. But four of those positions, we have to remember, were brand-new positions. Two retirements, and, you know, we don't want people to retire, but that happens. So we do expect that. And a leave of absence, which we certainly expect from time to time as well. So although there was a large number of new staff, you know, some of those turnovers are going to happen from year to year. But we're really seeing, we're really seeing, as we have for many years, there's a real consistency to the staff. And we don't have people just leaving the doors willingly. So that's a good sign. And that's happening throughout the district. The question I had earlier, you know, there was very little turnover. You know, a handful at each of our schools at the regional Pine Hill. Pine Hill mostly just because of the new staff between the classrooms they act. In terms of personnel here, over the course of the summer, as a result of changing needs around special education services, we did have to hire two additional FTEs that we hadn't budgeted for for educational assistance because of move-ins and changes in, and again, services required for some of our students. We had to do that. Two of the new staff are one-to-ones. That was a result of move-ins. But again, because of other changes, we have, we also have a few more one-to-one assistance this year than we have had in the past. And then last, around personnel, in October, we'll have a much more comprehensive financial report. But we'll be able to talk specifically about the impact of both the two new classroom teachers that we added that we're not going to budget, as well as the two educational assistants, and then the additional FTE for the foreign language. Our goal as we go through the year will be to, through called turnover savings or salary differential based on the number of new staff, to capture, you know, those differences in the salaries through the operating budget. That certainly is our goal. There's a few, there's a few places because of some, for example, change in utility contract and a very favorable fuel-oil contract that was opened right at the end of the school. I'm optimistic that we'll be able to do that without impacting, you know, what the educational services were envisioned when that budget was put together. So more of that to come. And then in terms of enrollment, in your packet is just a real quick snapshot, if you will, of the status of enrollment right now. Couple of important notes. As of September 16th, 474 students K to 5. K to 5 enrolled, another, Mark, can you help me out with pre-K number?
I'm sorry, 14.
14, 14 pre-K students.
How many were you last year?
I think 14 or 15.
Pre-K, yeah.
Yep, yep.
So the enrollment compared to this time last year was 460. So we're up 14 students. But we were also at this time last year, or as of October 1st, we were projecting somewhere between 444 and 452 students. We saw some enrollment growth through the year. And then interestingly enough, you'll see on this little worksheet, in June, we were talking about projecting 464 students. That went up by a couple of students in the middle of July. When we touched base on that, again, we were monitoring the enrollment every week. And then we had the 474. If you look on the sheet that breaks out the class sizes, I think one of the very positive results of the action that the committee took last June is that there is room for growth in all of our sections, in all of our grades. It's a, it's a little tight in grade three right now, but I'm sure we will stay within our size guidelines as we move through the year. And that room in the, in the class section, class sections, I think is a very positive thing for us as we look forward to what the enrollment might look like next year and down the road if we continue to see the kind of enrollment growth we have. So I think that's really positive. And then the one last thing on the superintendent's report is more of a personal item. I just want to thank the Dover School Committee, as well as the Sherburne School Committee and the Regional School Committee for the opportunity to be able to enjoy one more year here in the Dover and Sherburne Public Schools. Last year was a tremendous experience, tremendously positive experience for me. And I'm just really thrilled and pleased to be back for another year and look forward to working with you as we move forward to the end of June. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions to the superintendent?
I have a couple of questions, Bill. Do you know the average number of teaching years for the new professionals?
I don't offhand, I have to, I have to.
It's lots of experience, little experience, kind of?
I think we have a good range.
We do have a good range.
We do have a good range.
No one's fresh out of college.
And Laura, just on that point for Michael. I know anecdotally, at the beginning of the summer, then one was hearing that there was a great number of applications for positions here. Did that stay, stay at a reasonable, at a very, at a high level as you went through your particular hires?
Yes, and it happens in situations like this where you have multiple openings and the first ones are in the spring when we're still in the past year. You know, we keep those, we keep those open. And so we have access to a tremendous number of applicants. So it's not necessarily that we have only applicants we can look at from a later posting. Because we really get to know, you know, a whole pool through the typical, the typical search process, interviewing, model lessons, all that sort of thing. And we did indeed go back to different postings that we had. So I felt very good about the tools we had to afford.
So without wanting to test you on the number, but for the nine positions, would you guide us to several hundred applications or?
Oh, yes. Easy.
Michael, one more.
Bill, on the section chart, the red numbers, add, is that add and subtract from last year? From the projected at the end of last year? There's an updated in red, updated 916.
Right, so.
There's plus and minus.
Yeah, so you saw those numbers in June.
Mrs. Brown, June.
That they did.
Yeah.
And those were, I believe, updated as we went, right, Laura? I don't remember that.
Sorry, I just wanted to look at what you were looking at.
Except those line of numbers right below the grade designation going across the chart.
Ah, right, okay. Yes, okay. So the 87 was the number that we had from the grade moving out.
Yeah.
And then plus five is how many, I'm sorry, looking at the grade five difference. Plus five, how many additional folks we had moving in?
Right.
And then any that moved out.
Right. So the net number is what comes out to? We added five and we lost two, so we netted four.
Right, exactly.
Yep, that's right. And we started doing that, I think back in May at least when we started reporting. We use that, that process just to get a sense of, a better sense of what the numbers might look like. Because it's much easier, we hear more from parents who are, have already planned to move into town in the spring. So they're alerting us so we can project that they will be here. It's not as easy to get the information from families that this child may be leaving the school or maybe leaving the town. So that was really what guided us as we went into June and looked at the numbers and made some recommendations on those two additional classrooms. So that has just been updated as we've gone through the process.
Thanks. Very, you know, very little on the move out.
Right. Who's a stickler?
Quickly, I'd like to add, Bill, thank you for the nice comments about how the school looked. In terms of community feedback, I did hear from several parents after back-to-school night that they were happy with how the school looked in terms of classrooms and, you know, the way everything was presented. So it didn't go unnoticed with the, with the parents as well, so.
Thanks, thank you.
Any other comments or question? Perfect, thank you very much. Excellent. Okay, moving on to the next item, number four. And thank you, Dave Mataris, for being here. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about why this is on the agenda at all. The, so the Town, Park, and Rec Department has a capital budget item for this year for building new dugouts. Not a capital budget item, what is it?
Operating budget.
Operating budget, for building new dugouts at the lower Chicaring Little League baseball field. This is the one, not here, but down on Dedham Street, 123, where there are two large soccer fields and a Little League baseball field. The, so the operating budget funds are Park and Rec Department funds. The, in the, if you go to the town office and you pull the large piece of paper that says, "Who owns the various parts of land in town", both the land that we're on now, that this building is on, the upper Chicaring area, the basketball court, the re-back recess field, and the lower Chicaring field belongs to the Town of Dover slash Chicaring School. So the lower field that you, the school uses for, it's Field Day, but really is used by the town as a, an athletic youth sports and other sports area. And is maintained and is, is run by the Park and Rec Department. It's on land that in name it belongs to the school. So we, I was asked that the school committee, for the purposes of process, take a vote to approve the building of the new dugouts with Park and Rec funds. And the project's going to be managed and run and driven by, obviously, the Park and Rec Department. In your packet, there are, there is a memo from Dave Mataris, the director of Dover Parks and Recreation, to the superintendent, and some plans. Parks and Recreation, to the superintendent and some plans and specs for the project. Does anyone have any questions on the project to, Mrs. McTavish, she very kindly agreed to come in tonight, just in case there are any troublesome questions.
Is this the plans and we have identified someone who's going to do the work, or is this the plans before we go out to bid?
Before we go to bid. Unfortunately, it's, yes, it's more than $10,000. Whether it is or not, it's a public works project, so we need to be involved in the wage and so on, we have to go out to bid. And that's where we're kind of stuck right now. I have met with Donna before, she's very helpful, so we bounced back to town, Dover, administrative office, and said, "Okay, give me the boilerplate, we can put the specs together." "No, it's school property and you're paying for it," so it has to be through the school department. Plus we are now, we cover ping pong ball, and we'd like to get it straightened out so this project can play. I mean, everybody's in favor of it, the only question is though, who puts it out to bid? So, we are.
Well, we're only voting on it because, so I've spoken.
Oh, no, I know, right.
I've spoken to the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation, and he's assured me that the Park and Recreation Department is going to be putting it out to bid.
The town of Dover?
The elected, Mr. Chris Bowden, the elected commissioner.
Well, yeah, the segment put it out to bid under our name.
Sure.
Right.
But I just want to make sure, the school, the school administration department, the school regional business manager is not going to be doing that.
Okay.
Is currently, or the, do the teams sit behind fences?
I'm sorry?
Are they currently behind fences?
Yeah.
Would the fences be eliminated?
No, no, no.
So the dugouts are protected?
They're protected from the playing field itself, yes. And what we're actually putting in, as you see about the specs, is basically four posts and a roof, a corrugated vinyl covered roof to protect the kids from rain and sun and all the elements, but you can see through. One of the checks that we hit years ago was to put in regular dugouts, like they have open shirt ones, which are all boxed in. The police department was concerned that they, there could be nasty things going on behind those doors. They have to get other crews to check it for nighttime, so we make this open to the public to see.
Thanks. Any questions?
So we pick out, how should we approve?
Yeah, so I'd like, I'd like to, someone to propose a motion to approve the Dover Parks and Recreation Department project on Lower Chickering Field for the new dugouts.
So moved. Just thinking.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor?
Right.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So, moving on to item five, it's the full year 2016 project closeout. And I'd like to hand over to, to a business manager and welcome a face back to this room and these tables.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here. In your packet, you have, excuse me, I'm actually in the middle of a cold, so struggling a little, but you have the updated status of appropriations as of June 30th because Dover meets so late in June, there aren't many more days left, so you're looking pretty much the same. We had a few tweaks here and there, you actually ended up with about $60,000 more on the bottom line than what we rolled out June 20th, I believe that you're meaning. Part of that was a little extra circuit breaker money, a few tweaks in salaries.
Does the circuit breaker money not come in one lump?
Comes quarterly, but there is, there is like a true up the fourth quarter, so typically sometimes get a little bit more, so we did. So if you look at your packet, we were anticipating circuit breaker around 871,000, we got 895,000. But if you want to flip just to the status of appropriations, we now, I think as the June statement, started breaking out at the bottom, circuit breaker, because we used to.
Don, you're in the one that was provided to us, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, from Friday.
Gotcha.
We used to take the circuit breaker and pull the expenses out of the line items in out of district, which always was confusing because all of a sudden this money would just disappear. So now we're leaving the line items as is and we're showing circuit breaker reduction.
Right.
So that you can clearly see where, how we ended up with out of district. So the out of district actually was another area too, I think when we rolled out, in June we were expecting about a $430,000 deficit. There was one placement that never happened, so it ended up being like 408,000. So that was another little pickup. So because nothing really changed, does anyone have any questions on any of the particular categories of the budget?
More from, from the new guide table.
Yeah.
Was, was the differential in, in special I'd captured for 2017? Because there were some surprises, right?
The move-ins that we saw being a negative variance in '16, we did pick up in the budget in '17, the ones that we knew about before, before like February.
And so there perhaps would be more that, that we don't yet know about, or we've learned about since?
Yeah, so when you look at that, in your packet for communications, it's sort of just '17, we have not booked all the encumferences yet, encumferences yet for out of district, that'll be something we'll roll out to in October as we continue just to put everything in the system. So we'll have a really good report in October as to where we stand in out of district.
Right, thank you.
But I will also just, I added in the memo that because we saw a large negative variance, you'll see that come back in circuit breaker. So we're anticipating, so say we had 895,000 this year, we're anticipating a million four in circuit breaker. So although it seems like a large negative variance, we're going to get, you know, a big substantial piece of that back in this year, circuit breaker. So if there's new questions on the entity here, also including your packet, is a roll forward of all of our special revenues revolving funds. The pre-K playground actually crossed fiscal years, so in order, so you can see the true snapshot, there is a summary there at the bottom that shows you the total expenditures we incurred through August 31st. We had some gifts that you've accepted in '16, we have some gifts you're going to accept in '17. And so the balance that we ended up using from the 30,000 that you approved in May, I believe, was close to 25,000. And when you see the next quarterly statement of this, it'll all be, it'll all play out on the roll form. You also have a detail of the gifts, so you can see what's restricted and what's unrestricted in the gift month.
I recall when we, we approved the ability to spend up to 30,000, did we go all the way to the end, or did we?
No, that's what the, you did almost 24,599.
I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah.
So.
That's, that was balance that we pulled.
Five K from elsewhere.
No, more than that. So if you look at the gifts, you've got the 3,200 and the 12,800. Those were gifts that helped offset the cost. So that what we were left, I had to take out of the preschool revolving was 24,599 out of the total purchase, out of the total construction cost of 40,685. And then at the bottom, you also have the student activity fund balance. And so the town did do their audit as we know, and we have the audit report that they're waiting for a management response back. So there will probably be a few things that the committee is going to have to do to become, to get into compliance with the regulations around student activity funds, but we'll bring that to you at a later meeting.
Okay. No speaking downs?
No, just, just a little cleanup. We're pretty good.
Don, I guess, how come we, we always see the revenue coming in, but there's never anything going out?
So you will see stuff going out once we post the playground activity, that'll be in '17. So other than that, last year, there was nothing spent from the gift month. Because that would be, you know, there's, part of it is that I think sometimes those, we forget about that the gift fund is there, so that's why I tried to lay out for you what's restricted and what's unrestricted, so you have it available to you as you make decisions about other things.
Thanks.
And you will notice on the cafeteria that they did end up with a positive fund balance.
Yeah, well, I mean, are we going to analyze that to understand how, is that significant considering how, how, how much it swung the other way in recent years?
Right, well, you have to look at it because there's such a, depending on what kind of expenses they get hit with. So that one year, I think they did a negative balance, there was some equipment that they, equipment repairs and stuff, so that doesn't take much to swing around.
Yeah, but like the POS, isn't the POS in '16's expenditure? That, you remember that 10,000 or something that we had to spend?
It was split between years.
That was the total cost?
Part one in '15 and part one into '16.
Just, just a big.
But we had, we also tweaked the staffing, so the salary cost worth a little bit less, but we will be looking at all that in detail when we get down to our list on that.
Don, could I just, for my slow brain, just, if I'm looking at the, the special revenue revolving funds and the right-hand numbers, so fund balance at 630, 2016, in my mind, if I total up those four and come to an amount, if I understand correctly, I have to take off the 24,599 for the preschool, preschool playground, to get to a unclaimed reserves type total figure.
Actually, you don't because a lot of the expenses, that's why it's a little, because we have a year, because it's sort of cross fiscal year. A lot of the playground expenses are right now sitting in the preschool, so we just did a reclass to take some of those expenses from the preschool, put them into the gift fund to match the gifts that went with them. So your preschool balance, so in total, your fund balance is almost, it's understated because you also have the gifts that came in in '17 that haven't been input on the schedule yet. So this is, unfortunately, a lot happened in July.
Right.
And so there's, that's why I did the summary, just so you can get an idea of what happened, but it's not reflected up in the roll form because you'll see it in the next quarter when everything is correctly reflected.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to? Can I have one question, one question? I feel embarrassed, I don't know the answer to this. If I look at the big list of expenditures, the states of appropriations, the paraprofessionals, the teaching assistants, given, I know with the model that we have, they, they provide assistance for special, special education children and regular, regular education children. Do they, teachers comma classroom, teachers comma spent, how does that?
So that is where they are right now.
Teachers comma?
Both, depending on if they're designated to be a regular aid or a special aid, they are sitting in those teachers line items. That's a change though, we made when we start looking at your fiscal year '17, we have all other paraprofessionals, educational assistants are in their own line, pulled out of the teachers. So when you look at your numbers for '17 right now, you're going to see some really wacky budget analysis, or budget variances because we haven't quite changed all the budget line items to agree with how we want to book it in '17.
And I promise I didn't notice any change before I asked the question.
Yeah, it was a good question. Well, now it's pulled out and we've actually, I mean, talking out to the '17 package a little bit, we're trying to put things where they sort of belong. So this will be a year where you might have some unusual variances, but they, because we're trying to make the numbers more accurate, we're putting them out by line items.
Great.
Will the budget follow it, the apples?
The 18 budget, we will, I think we are thinking about making budget line, budget line item transfers.
That will be reflected in FY '17.
Right.
When we make these kind of changes, unfortunately, they, they don't follow in budget sense from previous years.
Okay.
So, so looking at historical spending, we would have to do that in a supplemental, you know, worksheet or something, some sort of.
Okay. Any other questions? Tremendous, thank you very much, Don. So the next line item, it's the full year 18 technology plan supplement draft, I'm going to hand over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Wade Green. I will say two quick words and then pass it over to the assistant superintendent. I do want to thank Karen and, and the Chickering staff for their work on the supplement plan, and I think it was very thoughtful, and thank you, I appreciate that. Karen?
So thank you. In June, we came before you with the district technology plan, this is the supplement that applies specifically to Chickering. You'll see in blue font the changes for Chickering, and it's outlined as the rationale, the goals and the benchmarks in the areas of learning, teaching, leadership, assessment and infrastructure. So you're seeing all of those things there, and I think it's important for us to highlight, and Mrs. Dialle will just give you the Chickering lens, but I think it's, it's important to think about how this is a K-12 initiative and this is Chickering's snapshot. I know in the past you've received inventory, you'll receive that for the October meeting. I can imagine we were trying to get this up and running, so we're underway. And to know that everything that was on the previous plan, because the other documents were different from what we're going forward looking at, that the purchases that were to be made, the 16, 17 funding, are certainly underway. Most of that happened during the summer. I spoke to Mr. Attacca just before the meeting, and most of this is completed, so I just wanted to give you an update on that. I think it's important that Mrs. Dialle, we had talked about, you know, so what does technology look like, given that we're looking for the technology to support the learning and how it's embedded, so that a day in the life of technology at Chickering. So I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Dialle, and certainly she can speak to the specifics of the, the plan, but also to show you what it looks like for students when it comes to technology use at Chickering.
A brief introduction, as, as a public school, we are very advanced in terms of the access that we have to technology devices, in terms of the applications and programs and subscriptions that we have, so we're in a very good place. So further movement forward involves being more mobile with the devices that we have and continuing to integrate it thoughtfully where it makes sense in the curriculum. So, who may, I'd ask Christine Atkinson to, I'm just going to show a couple slides. Honestly, these are five that I pulled out from the loop that was shown at Open House, so they truly are in the life of. The, the other ones that I've taken the last little days, I apologize, have not, have not come through my email to be installed, but Christine and I would love to just talk to you briefly about, you know, what does, what does technology look like at Chickering?
Okay.
Yes, high tech. High tech, high tech. So I'll be brief, but obviously if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. So this is one of those pictures, I believe it was fourth grade last year, a lot of what we do as the kids come up, in fourth grade they have the opportunity to join band, and with that, there's a technology component, smart music. And so, yeah, many of your, this smart music, I don't know if that's a bad thing, believe me, I see it both ways, but it's an opportunity for the kids at home to practice and use technology and be able to communicate that with Mrs. Barry, and she can then hear what they're playing and if there are, and sometimes there are problems, but there's also a piece of perseverance and working through their problems to figure that piece out. So that is a piece that we do at grade. Wrong way. Here are some little guys, I believe it's kindergarten, obviously you see some of them with headphones, some of them working together, either being able to have a book read to them so they can hear that fluency piece, practice reading along out loud, which may be part of the headphone piece, as well as other activities that they can then interact with each other and, and help each other out. As well as the books on the floor, so we haven't gotten rid of the books. Ah, Mr. Hart, so typical, I believe this is downstairs computer lab, you know, the labs are still great, and the fact that we have the pieces of technology in the classroom gives us a lot of flexibility, but there's also something to be said for going to that computer lab or the shift that we're making in the future to make it more versatile, but it's, it's a great way to get the kids all on PCs at the same time and kind of help work them through, through the different programs. Because by the time they get to us, I have to admit, there's, there are assumptions, right, like they know how to get on work, they know how to do certain things, and so without Mr. Hart, we would, we would not be where we are today. Oh geez, I am having technology trouble. So it's interesting, this picture's in here, and when I originally saw it, it was one of those like, bats in the school? What? Like, my room looked like that maybe eight years ago. And then I have to admit, I didn't want necessarily those machines in my room anymore because it, it felt so locked in. I mean, it's, it's. I mean, it's working here, but I think we're starting, we are starting to see that mobile piece, where kids can move around the room. They're not necessarily locked to that table. And I'm not necessarily locked to having that table where the jacks are. There's that piece of, like, but it would make so much more sense if I could have their desk here and my desk, that doesn't work because the jack's over there. So it's nice that we are starting to move away from kind of being tied to the board and the wall. Man, still have problems. All right, so there were a couple of other things. One of the ones Mrs. Dialle had was of an interactive whiteboard. And she was moving through, and I thought, wait a minute, when I started here, we didn't have interactive whiteboards. And so it's so different now how we teach. I can't imagine getting through math without my interactive whiteboard. So it's one of those that it's like, I don't want to forget kind of where we've come from because there's been so many changes. Chromebooks, we actually just got our introduction to our new Chromebook cart that we're all loving, 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 loving. It opens tomorrow morning at eight AM, very excited. And that's enabling us with the ten in the classroom that we have and now being able to take out ten at a time, they're beautiful little handheld carts, to be able to have our class all on those mobile devices in the classroom in the moment. And it's nice because we're tying it into curriculum. So I have colleagues of mine who has a social studies curriculum, she does it right online. And so there's that piece, not only for, this is the way the world is moving, but we have a lot of kids who OT's a hard piece and getting their ideas out on paper is hard. But typing, typing somehow frees up the brain. And so it's opening up doors that maybe before weren't as open. So I'll leave it at that because it's going to be short. But if there's any questions on how we use them, what we're doing, you know, let me know, I'm happy to answer best my ability.
Some of the textbooks that we use, like, I'm thinking of Everyday Math, will that ever go online or is there a... I know that there's the family component that the families can see, but I'm thinking of the actual workbook and...
So for instance, Everyday Math, so all the teacher materials are on, the student workbooks are online as well. So for instance, today, perfect example, we're doing compass work, chapter one. And if I, in the past, would have said, everybody open up their books and follow, you would catch fifty percent, if I was doing this in advance, maybe seventy-five, but to be able to walk them through, so I pulled up their journal and said, nobody take out their book, let's look at this together. And I could preview exactly what happened and it was going to happen, model for them what was going to happen, and then allow them to go forth and do it, which frees up kids in terms of precision. Some need to work at a slightly slower pace, some can move much more quickly, we can go over pages together, you hit that number two and you've had the seventh kid ask the same question, everybody stop, we pull it up, let's go over this together. So I can see it at home, so for a piece professionally, I always have access to the curriculum. But we can use it within the school day all the time, hence not to be interactive whiteboard. Without that interactive whiteboard, it wouldn't matter what the curriculum was, I wouldn't be able to get it out. That makes sense.
I actually, I'm glad we, this is kind of apropos, because I was thinking about, I was with some friends this past summer and they were talking about their school district is looking into the idea of using technology during school snow days and the ability to access curriculum, which is exactly what you're talking about, during times when there maybe there's a snow day or other sort of reason for not being able to open up school and using technology to avoid the loss of an active day or a productive school day. So if you think about the future, inability to use technology, assuming people have the access to it at home. We might be able to address the need for building in snow days into our schedule and thinking about a more consistent calendar and the like. So that was, I thought, a great idea and I wanted to bring it back, but I think it might be something to think about in the future, how we might want to integrate that into a curriculum or the ability to avoid lapses in, you know, the week due to weather or thereabouts and then have access to the curriculum online.
And crush their childhood snow day experience.
I'll tell you what, if you get the work done in a few hours, then you can go out there and have your softball fight.
So they did that in North Conway last school year in New Hampshire, they piloted that program. And if seventy percent of those students did the work required, then that could count as a snow day. And they just, you know, in some districts, they can't assume that everyone has access to the technology at home. We, you know, certainly could find that out. But they did take it on as a methodology now, and it's been successful in some of those where they're... And I think we're certainly, as teachers, employing more options. This year, I had a colleague who suggested digitally dot read, no, digital dot read, reading, now I can't remember because I'm on the spot, ReadWorks, Eller. And I can actually have the kids sign up and assign either the same reading to everyone or assign different readings to different students based on need. There are comprehension questions that go with it, there's vocabulary, they do it at home, so it takes care of that paper pencil reading log possibly. And then they send it back, you know, they submit it back, I then get the feedback, I can then add to it, I can send it back. So it's just, there are so many options out there. I know we use Excel all the time, but there, it's nice to have that opportunity of, everybody go grab a Chromebook. And today, let's get on Excel and I want you to go to this section, table, and look at polygons, open and closed. It's just another option and it's another avenue for kids to be able to take in the curriculum and then practice applying it.
Is there any pressure felt to kind of keep up with the Joneses and take on technology for technology's sake rather than kind of in conjunction with what makes sense?
I'm going to say no. I think it's what makes sense and that's the response. And you can hear that through Christine's perceptions on what's needed, we'll integrate it, we'll think about it, that applies, that doesn't. So I know there are some districts that are looking at, I want to model fully digitized curriculum, and whatever makes sense for Chicaring is what we'll do.
Well, but perhaps what's being, what's heard from prospective families who are coming in and saying, oh, well, this school district, they all have their, you know, their mobile devices and why don't you have it here?
Maybe, I think just as much other parents don't want so much technology.
Well, that's why I'm asking, yeah. Is there pressure felt or feedback that you get?
So no, and I hesitated because my first thought was, well, we are the Joneses. We just, we have, we have access, we have the resources here that we need. And we have had discussions about, does it make sense to go to, you know, a one-to-one plan? And we decided, no, at least at this point in time, one of the things we want to do is match the appropriate device, the appropriate application to the work that we're doing and it's very specially designed. And I think that because we have technology experts within this building who naturally as people and as professionals are constantly working with all of our staff, that it comes about naturally. And they're incredibly accessible, so Cheryl Chase here, as well as Steve Hart. They are working with educators throughout the building all the time, whether it's a particular project or, you know, just giving a little suggestion about something. So culturally, we're very comfortable with saying, hey, I've got this idea, you know, do you know how I could make this happen? And we are sensitive too, to not doing technologies just for technology's sake. I think from the time I started here, that was the mentality and we continue to emphasize that, even in our school goals, where we talk about integrating technology, it's in a thoughtful, meaningful way. So it's a very good question. And I can happily say that I think we're in a very good place of just thinking about, okay, how can we make the curriculum more accessible for kids and really keep them highly engaged?
I think it's a tribute to the infrastructure. The devices are there, the infrastructure, wireless infrastructure, anything that's needed is accessible for our educators. And even in Christine's comments, you know, how many years ago there wasn't a whiteboard, but she can't do without it now because it really helps to model what students' learning. So I think that's the important part, so it's a tribute to the support of the schools.
So I just want to say thank you for the technology plan. And I've seen it at Chicaring level, having seen it at the region a couple months ago. It's great to see the work, so thank you for all the work that's going to it. Question perhaps to the superintendent or to you, Dawn. How do you see it, how do you see the living document that it is coming back and reacquainting itself with the school committee over its life? I'm imagining every meeting might be too much, but a couple times a year, how would you, how would you say? I just, it's such a vibrant step-by-step document, it'd be lovely to at least for us to see it a few times a year, just how that's, how it's moved on. And as always, which tasks are tough to knock off and which are easy to do?
And I think the school driven plan complements the plan here, which is a tribute to the work at the school level. So I think we certainly could bring it back at intervals that you feel are appropriate to give an update on where we are and what is happening. Because you can see a lot of it is, let's use the capital we already have, and that's the human capital and the actual device capital and see what happens next. I want to just say, want to tribute to where we've been to where we are today. To me, that says a lot for the professional staff.
Thank you very much. And Miss Atkinson, thank you very much. Okay, we go to the next item, capital planning update.
Before we just do that very quickly on the tech supplement plan, so just to set the context, this is a draft. The plan will ask me to bogart at the next meeting. So if you do have questions between now and the next meeting, if you could forward those to us, that would be helpful because we will take one more look at it based on the feedback that we do receive. And if we need to make adjustments, we'll do that as part of the final plan.
And at the last page is the budget appropriated for the school year eighteen.
Right, and it's, this year's request is approximately forty-one hundred dollars more than last year. And we will in October talk about where, what the funding source is for the tech supplement plan. Of last year, it was about fifty-fifty was paid, about fifty percent of it was paid out of the operating budget. Actually, seventeen thousand out of thirty-six thousand was from the operating budget. And then almost nineteen thousand was actually part of the capital plan. And capital has changed, the capital committee has changed their...
Threshold.
Yeah, the threshold.
Their item thresholds, yeah.
On what a capital item should be. So that may impact, I think it will impact, impact what, if anything, in this plan under capital or just goes into the operating budget.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. So moving on to a capital planning update, I'm going to talk through this item, but I'm going to encourage Mrs. Tatori and superintendent to chip in and help me if I forget anything at the end. The capital subcommittee, which we did, Matt Arise met on Monday, and we had, that was our first opportunity to talk through the items in this packet. And we're going to go through both the FY seventeen status of items and then the first pass at full year two thousand and eighteen. So in your packet, you see the memorandum from the capital budget committee. Again, two things I'd like to highlight from that. The first one is the change of the threshold that was just been mentioned. Only items in excess of ten thousand dollars will be considered as appropriate for the capital budget committee. And again, just recognizing again, the comments made by the capital budget committee in terms of the pricing put in for capital items. Again, this is a comment to all town departments, not necessarily Chicaring School or the region, but just making the point that some of those items have been too conservatively priced resulting in reserve fund transfers or delays and asking all capital items to be realistic and complete in terms of costs. I know, I reached out to Bob Springett to see if the capital budget committee had identified their liaison assignments and reps for this year. There was a meeting of that committee on September the thirteenth, and in the agenda, it was hoped that that would be done then, it actually wasn't. And their meeting launched over the fourth, and they hoped to assign reps for liaisons for the various town departments then. So at the moment, we don't know who our school committee liaison will be from the capital budget committee. So the next page, if you look at the, this is the full year seventeen, there are four items there. And you can see that the differences between what the approved amounts and the amount spent. In the cases of the gym wood for refinishing, the gym curtain divider, and the air conditioning units in the tech rooms, fortunately, the amount spent was less than the amount approved. Unfortunately, the example of the aerial manned lift, that's ended up being more expensive than the amount approved by one thousand seventy-five dollars. And that difference will be expensed to the general fund as that comes up. But the three above that, again, people should feel, I think, reassured how those came about. And I will say, just from using the gym, whether it's for a sports activity or for preschool box, having the divider replaced and various living creatures that were living in there now removed, it's fantastic. And the gym looks great, absolutely wonderful around there. Any questions on those last items? Moving on, and perhaps just for Michael, first time seeing this, the town in two thousand and twelve did a report called an onsite insight report, which was a strategic view of capital needs for the school going out.
Twenty years.
Twenty years. And it was, it has been of enormous help in, I think, for the town, but also the school committee is to know what's coming down the pipeline in terms of needs. And obviously, when a particular item comes close to its year, it's reviewed and sometimes it can be pushed out a couple of years ago, or sometimes it needs to be brought forward. And sometimes technology and costs have changed, the figure, the real figure is slightly different. Mrs. Tatori said that in a study that she's done, looking at the difference between the actual cost and the anticipated cost when the report was done, it's normally within a twenty percent amount, which I think is reassuring.
About the timing? The timing fairly close?
I think we maintain our billing so well that we have a tendency to push things out versus having to do them when their estimated useful life has come up. So you typically see us pushing things out.
When the report was done, it was noted that after about four or five years, a refreshed report should be completed. And when the capital subcommittee met, it was noted that it's time for us to consider doing that. So one would expect in the coming year that that's going to be, this is going to be updated. But the years and the lines and the line items that you see in this report for fiscal years two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two... years 2018 to 2022 come from that report. So I'm going to just go through, or I'm going to perhaps ask some people to help me on a couple of number items. If we look at the first one, cafeteria, sound system, and lights. Dawn, could you just provide some context on that?
So I don't have a lot of context on that piece because I think Laura may have more because Laura and Anthony Rataco actually met with the vendor on that. We just got the quote in at about 2:00 today.
Laura, could you maybe just talk about what the overall need was discussed for this project?
Yes.
Laura, just quickly, before you do that. So for just some context, if I'm not mistaken, this is an item that is not part of the original onsite insight report.
No, it is. It is. And we've been deferring it. So updating the sound system and lights, and there might be a misnomer that lights is still there because that is the title from the onsite insight report. It is a placeholder in the report.
Laura, yes, said that to be corrected.
Sorry.
Not the first time.
I guess I should have said yes.
We use the cafeteria as our primary presentation place. And there are some things that are there and functioning well, such as the projection, the drop-down screen. And there are other things where the wiring was put in when the school was built, but it has not been fully functional since the time the school was built. So we have done a lot of workarounds. Cheryl Chase has done a fabulous job making everything work well. But you'll see cords taped to the floor and a lot of behind-the-scenes things that I'm not even aware of. So what we'd like to do is make everything fully functional and update things as well. So the school is about 15, 16 years old. So it's that time when just technology is such that we're ready for an upgrade as well. So one of the things, for example, is having a projector that is suspended. When we met the other day, we were talking about the best location for that so that it's safely located and yet has the strong image on the screen itself. And looking at the sound system as well. So that's where we are.
Any questions on that?
Nah, 2:00 the number that came in is about mine, is what we have.
It was a little higher than the placeholder that was in there, yeah. But I think it's more an extensive upgrade to the sound system and the projection system than what onsite insight was sort of forecasting. So that's where it was tweaked.
Yeah.
So it doesn't always match. So they were just, basically, their number would have been to go replace exactly what was there. And so what was there is not really, it sounds like not meeting the needs.
It's not a replacement.
Yeah, this is really, well, it's a replacement in that, well, it's half and half.
Yeah.
It's an upgrade.
Right.
Great.
Okay.
So what happens next then?
What, so, so what will happen is, this will be, these items for 2018. We, this is the first pass. We have to consider them and we will then vote to approve at a later meeting. And then certainly by the end of December, we will submit that to town capital budget committee. And in between that, there'll be meetings that superintendent and I will have with the Warren and Capital Budget Committee just to talk through these more granular detail. And then it'll be part of the town meeting in May.
But I'm sorry, so just to mention, so we would go with this bid that we had and then we would need to read this?
No, no, this is a placeholder.
Okay.
So you have to go out.
The one that came in today?
It's just, it's an estimate for us to be able to move this forward.
And then we have to go to three additional vendors?
Yes.
Okay, that's just what I was going to say.
Long, boring Adrian also, but it's me too.
But I think the further point there, Brooke, is that given the complexity of the project and how this particular vendor broke out the cost, it's, as of now, I would say it's, to go back further to the capital committee's comments in there, in their guidelines to the town departments, this would be a good, a cost estimate to base moving forward on it.
Okay.
But because of the cost and the nature of the project, it is a project that would have to go out to public hearing.
The cafeteria floors item, current cafeteria floors are original to when the building was built. And we're at the stage, much like we were with the gymnasium floors, which was original, that it's time to replace the hard used areas. And cafeteria is used, it's not just a, as you said, it's a meeting area, it's not just an eating area. And I know that the Dido is there again now, and it's a very happy and jolly place whenever I see it at the end of school. So that's the $20,500. And that estimate was obtained as part of a series of estimates around the region for various similar types of flooring work.
Is there a replacement, like pulling up tile, putting up new tile? It's not like the gym floor where you can sort of take off a layer?
There is an opportunity to lay on top of the floor. So that's a decision to be made, but I think the product, pull it up. Because it's a few places, yeah.
Yeah. This is based on removing the current floor.
Post-asbestos, same material?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is the placeholder amount that was added in the last academic year to the capital budget year. And it's part of our attempts to, and investigations that's been discussed at length here to try and solve the temperature issues in the school. Some updates on that for the committee. We have some more data, thank you very much, Mrs. Torri, some more data just very recently for the days since the beginning of the school year. And Mrs. Torri is, it has them and is in the process of adding them to the file that we had from the dates that was previously drawn down from the, from the system. I know just eyeballing them, there were, towards the end of the days, there was certainly a significant number of temperatures above 80 degrees. And I know anecdotally, it's not been much fun up in those hot rooms. So we await those data to be added to the file that we already have and hopefully that can be shared with the committee at a different meeting. We also, at the end of the spring, we received a report from our consultants who had spent time looking at the building. And just to remind people, they essentially came up with a recommendation for heat control, which was turn off the lights, try not to let sun in. And there was a second recommendation to optimize the way the ventilation system works in the building. And there is a purge system, which it was recommended could be tweaked to improve the way that the ventilation helped the temperature, especially at night, and how that translated to a beginning temperature the next day. That work has been done. Thank you very much, Mr. Ralph Kelly. It's, it is only just barely helping temperatures. Mrs. Torri mentioned that there's a difference somewhere between one and two degrees. But that work has been completed and the purge system is now working as the consultants have suggested. The estimates for their solution of these, of the split system, sorry, the ductless split level system, air conditioning systems, it was $600,000. And there was a question though that the superintendent had as to whether that included the soft costs of the engineering and design phase that's often done before construction happens and is part of the pre-process. And the superintendent reached out to the firm and specifically asked that question and with a follow-up of if it is not, how much would they expect to be on top of that, on top of the $600,000? $600,000 was, did not include the soft costs, and the estimate was somewhere between $65,000 and $70,000?
Yes.
Dollars. So, and other expenses that were not included in that $600,000 would be cost of custodial time for any work, extra electricity.
The electrical, the electrical work.
The electrical work. So there are a number of smaller items which need to be fully understood and fully accosted for us to change this placeholder of $1 million. It's there. The capital budget subcommittee didn't feel comfortable changing it now because we didn't have all the information we needed right now to come up with, to present at the first pass, a more realistic figure. But it certainly seems to be less than the $1 million that's in this sheet before you. In terms of next steps, there are obviously conversations that will happen in the coming days with Crowley, the consulting firm, to firm up those costs. There are conversations that superintendent and I will have with the Warren and the capital budget members to talk through the costings and the process. And it may be that the committee may need to meet very briefly in, between now and the scheduled October meeting, if there is need to consider funds for that initial engineering and design phase of $65,000 to $70,000. I don't want to put any possible solutions of how that will be or timing on it, but I'd love to try and get the committee approving first steps when it's needed as soon as possible rather than wait for the next scheduled meeting. Because I know that the time that we will need to complete this soft phase before the town needs the full costs in December, it's tight. But, so if we could buy ourselves a couple of weeks, I mean, a meeting, an extraordinary 8:15 meeting or something, or 7:30 or whatever. Have I missed anything?
No, in terms of that aspect of a possible project, you touched all the notes. Again, there's a couple of different ways to proceed. One way would be to continue to try to fine tune what the engineering design cost would be. We still need to determine, for example, if, on the electrical piece, if the current electrical system has the capacity to meet the needs of these new pieces of equipment. We think it does, but we need to, we need to find out for sure because that certainly would be an additional cost, adding capacity. And timing, you know, the timing is really important. Assuming that town meeting, we have a cost number, but we haven't done the design, the design, and money's were appropriated in the spring, you know, all the work necessary to design the project, put it out to bid, there wouldn't be enough time for that work to be done over the summer. So you'd be talking about, you know, what happens. And if we attempted to do the work during the school year, it would likely, it wouldn't work because it would have to be outside of school hours. And frankly, that would really increase the cost of the project. So if there's a way to do the design prior to the spring, and part of the design process will be another cost estimate based on the specs that are designed, so that will be a further check on what Crowley, you know, has estimated, then it opens up, you know, the time, the phasing and timing of how this project gets done. So there's still a little more work and conversation to happen over the next few weeks.
So a few items of clarification. The design and build are necessarily two separate components that are, will be contracted out separately rather than a turnkey design-build?
Typically, in a project like this, it's more, it's more typical that there's a designer that is brought on board, they put together the specs, and then they'll oversee and work with us on the bidding process. And again, depending on how that design process goes, perhaps they would assist in the management of the construction project as well.
Does the engineering go out to bid? Or is that?
So the designer services here would likely not be an architectural firm unless it was a full-service firm that had, you know, engineering department and all the different types of engineers. It probably is some kind of an engineering outfit that would bid for the designer services.
So that's a bid process as well?
Yeah, that is.
Okay, thanks.
So the hope, again, just to reiterate, the hope in terms of timing is in the next two weeks, firm up costing options and funding options for the design phase. And for that to be completed in the fourth quarter. That's the hope. And then so that the town can have a full, realistic and appropriate cost before the end of the year, and then a full ask can be made at town meeting. But there's lots of conversations to happen in the next couple of weeks from superintendent nine with our colleagues on the Warren and Capital Budget, but that's where we look at the moment. Any questions on any of that? I think that's us done for capital planning. Make a third? Tremendous. So I'd like to turn people's attention to the consent agenda, which includes approval minutes for June 20th and approval of a donation, which is on page 52 of your packet. Mrs. Torri, in terms of donations, is anything mentioned in context? Or?
Yeah, there's a letter in there. It's the $5,000 from the PTO that's the playgrounds.
I wondered if I, do I specifically cite that?
Oh, no, no. It's in there because it's in the consent, yeah, you don't have to.
So any questions on the consent agenda? May I have a motion approving the consent agenda, Lauren?
This is embarrassing, I didn't notice this before. I don't think I was present at the June 20th meeting, but yet it wouldn't be a quorum.
You seconded something. And a couple of things. I know I was not in attendance.
I'm sorry. It was the main thing that I wasn't at.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I think you were because Michael was abroad.
You're right, now I'm remembering it.
Excellent.
I remember that meeting well, Lauren.
Appreciate you seconding me for secretary. If I was here, I might have spoken up.
I did mention that you wanted to be called Mr. Secretary. Okay.
Madam Secretary.
So, now I'm cleared that off.
Sorry.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you. Seconded. Thank you, Brooke. All those in favor?
Alex Dave.
Alex Dave, thank you, three votes. Now, moving on to communications for members' information, just to highlight for you the items in the packet. You've got some minutes from the regional school committee, from the Sherburne School Committee, the meeting calendar, FY '17 budget update, coordinated program review. And I have one item of other business I just want to, just to present to people. So in November, there is an election vote on the issue of charter schools and the limits of charter schools in the state, as most people will be aware of. Several school committees throughout the state have decided to take a position on the question and have taken a vote on that. And there are other school committees that have not. We have this meeting and the October meeting before the vote. And what I wanted to do was to offer members of the committee the chance to give a view or discuss, not the actual question, yes or no, but to discuss whether Dover School Committee should take a vote on the item as part of our stewardship of education matters in the Chicagorin School. I'm not looking for a vote or any action at the end of this, but what I'd like to do is offer the chance for us to discuss this in an open meeting. And then between now and the October meeting, we invite the members to reach out to me as to how they feel about that one issue after this discussion. And then, subject to that feedback, I will come back at the October meeting and there will or there will not be an agenda item on that. So does anyone have any thoughts as to how as a school committee we should be feeling about this?
I mean, I would say, I mean, it's an important item, I think, for public schools in general in funding and whatnot, in our support for teachers in our community. But in terms of making a resolution, A, I don't think we need to in this meeting. So, because I don't think the vote would happen until after our next meeting in October. So unless anyone wants to share any views, I don't really think we need to. But again, you know, the support for the teachers is something that's paramount to, you know, this success and how the school system works. But I'll just leave it there.
Okay. Any thoughts for anyone else?
I'm not sure whether the question ought to be in our purview. You know, particularly because of the, I guess, relatively small portion of state assistance that we get, that I don't know that there would be an impact either way on Chicagorin and Dover. And I would think that something that's beyond the Chicagorin or Dover school system would be really outside of our charge.
Laura, what do you think?
I feel the same way. I feel, I think, because we don't have a significant financial impact from the decision, that I think it's not a vote that we can, a position that is in our purview. I think if it were otherwise, then I do think it's something that we could take a position on.
So I received something from MASC that I thought I might just share. So there are currently, as of last, the last 24 hours, I think, Lemonster and Sorghus voted, which takes the total to 120 committees who have taken a position. Those that have not, Westwood, Weston, Wellesley, Wayland, Sudbury, Sharon Needham, Natick, Medfield, Marblehead, Manchester Essex, Lincoln Sudbury, Lincoln, Hopkinton, Hingham, Duxbury, Concord Carlisle, Concord Carlisle, Cohasset, Belmont and Acton Box, just for a flavor of.
So they've either not discussed it or chosen not to make a.
They have not yet.
Yes.
Taken a position.
And 120 communities have.
Correct. Brooke, any thoughts?
Well, I think I'd express to you similar thoughts to what there is. And I don't think anyone's looking to us on this particular issue given that it's not as relevant to our community. And I would feel, as I said, I would prefer not to take a stance on that.
So again, I'd like the members to just consider this. And I will reach out to them before the next meeting bilaterally. And then we'll, on the basis of that, we may address this at the next meeting. But as Henry said, we have time. But I wanted to take the opportunity in open meeting to do this. I personally would just echo Henry's comments about showing support for the educators in the state. And yes, we have a duty here, but I think there's a power symbolism maybe also considerable. But let's, if everyone could come back to me before the next meeting and I'll reach out to people to see how the thinking has developed. So that is my other items of business. Any other points for anyone else? At which point, at 8:11, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.